The Southfield Board of Education now comes to order. And Jeff Key Williams, if you will please, please.
I welcome you to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Good evening, everybody, and welcome to the October meeting of Southfield Board of Education. My name is Earl Buchanan, and I'm the board president.
I'm Pearl Cass, Vice President of the Board. I'm Nancy Secretary for the Board.
Michael Cool, School Board Treasurer.
Mr. Lord, Board Trustee.
Betty Russell, Board Trustee.
Randy Williams, Board Trustee.
Wanda Cook Robinson, Superintendent.
Shereen Barker, Director of Finance.
David Turner, Associate Superintendent for Human Resources and Labor Relations.
Lieutenant, Associate Superintendent for Instruction.
And with us tonight, we have on the audio Ms. Precious Williams. In the back, we have Chuck Cass on the video. Tonight, we have the pleasure of introducing our new student rep. This year, we've done something different in the fact that we have, in addition to our two comprehensive high schools, Southfield High and Southfield Laker Field, we have student representation now from Southfield Regional Academic Campus as well as from University High School Academy. So I'm going to call each of the students up to introduce themselves, and if everybody would please welcome them as they take on this new responsibility. First, we have Mr. Earl Vine from the Southfield Regional Academic Campus.
Hello, I am Earl Vine from Southfield Regional Academic Campus. This year, I would hope for us to get a lot accomplished. We've been having a lot of accomplishments so far throughout the year because of these spots, and so far, we have a lot learned from you.
All right. Next up, we have Ms. Kiara Terrence from Southfield High School.
Hi, my name is Kiara Terrence. I'm from Southfield High. I hope that during this meet, these meetings, I can get a lot of information to share with the students and hopefully get some information back to you guys about the great things that we're doing. You can come out and support our school at Southfield Laker for a football game on Friday at 4:00. Go Blue Jays!
Next, we have Mr. Blair Moore from Southfield Laker High School.
Good evening. Good evening. My name is Blair Moore. I am a senior at Southfield Laker High School, and more than anything, I believe in the strong foundation Laker builds. I participate in many groups and clubs at my high school, including French Club, Interact Club, Student Congress, the Yearbook Group, the Medical Academy, and the International Baccalaureate Program, which connects Southfield Laker to students all over the world, working together to make the world a better place, and the Embrace the Difference Group. In fact, this past Friday, the Embrace the Difference Group participated in the Student Exchange Program with Seehome High School. The program allowed Seehome students a chance to not only tour Laker with the Embrace the Difference members, but experience the classroom environment as well. All these extracurricular activities at Laker have opened my eyes to a world of possibilities, possibilities that stir English dreams. I am proud to be a part of such a high school with students, not only eager to serve others, but their surrounding community. At Laker, our greenhouse has been remodeled, and the ribbon ceremony for its opening will be held this Wednesday, October 10th. And our parent-teacher conferences, our parent-teacher conference will be held October 23rd. I would personally like to thank the Board of Education for allowing me the honor of representing my school. Thank you.
And last but certainly not least, we have Ms. Ashley Parker from University High School Academy.
Hello, everyone. My name is Ashley Parker, and I'm a senior at University High School Academy, and I am involved in Student Congress, and I'm also the treasurer for Class 4 of 2013. So this year, UHSA started off the school year with our annual icebreaker, which took place September the 7th. The second week of school, we had our Big Brother, Big Sister Week, where a group of seniors volunteered to pretty much be that big brother or big sister to all of the freshmen at our school. UHSA Art Club volunteered at Adler's Parent Night, where they did face paintings for all the children that attended that event. Our parent-teacher conferences will be next Wednesday and Thursday, October 17th to 18th. So this year, we have new clubs that are involved in our school, and we have Green Club, our Walking and Running Club, Art Club, United for Christ, Young Ladies, and also our Book Club and Jack by Demand. Our eighth grade open house will be November 1st, from 6:30 to 8:00 p.m., and our application window will be open from October 29th to November 17th, which is located on our UHSA website. Also, our counselor, Mr. Patton, has had one-on-one meetings and are still ongoing with each of our seniors, where we will have all of our college ads completed by our early application deadline, November 1st. Thank you.
So we're looking forward to a lot of good things, a lot of good reports, from you and then you back to your students, your students that you represent as well. That's kind of the position that you hold, so hopefully, we have a very good year. As far as the meeting is, I'm trying to...
Student and staff recognition. But this evening, not only do we have student and staff recognition, but we also have a recognition among the boards. President Buchanan has been elected to serve on the Board of Directors for the Michigan Association of School Boards. He represents Group 5, which includes school districts with student populations between 5,001 students and 11,000 students. In this role, he supports the mission of MASB, and that's the Michigan Association of School Boards, which is to provide quality educational leadership services and to advocate for student achievement and public education. He also keeps school board members informed about educational issues, and this is quite an honor to have one of our own represented on the state MASB board. So congratulations.
Since I've been on the school board, I've been involved in MASB in terms of the training that they give to board members to help us to be better board members. I think a lot of people want you to apply for, you know, to run for the school board. You have your own ideas about, you know, who's going to do this, who's going to do that, until you find out that's not quite what the job is. And I think the reason that this board has been as efficient as it is is that this board has taken on the same responsibility, and every member of this board is board certified by the Michigan Association of School Boards, and they've also been honored and recognized as being a leader board. So this is an honor that I share also with my colleagues that sit with me here at the table, because they have all stepped up to improve their skills as board members, and I think that they should be recognized as well, so. Okay. Dr. Wanda Cook Robinson has been nominated for the Michigan Association of School Administrators Superintendent of the Year Award. This award is presented to an individual who has shown tremendous effort and dedication to enriching the lives of children and the community as a whole. When she wins, and I repeat, when she wins, she will automatically be considered for the National Superintendent of the Year Award from the American Association of School Administrators. Congratulations, Doctor.
Well, it takes a village, so I wish I could say I did it all by myself, but I did not. I have a fantastic cabinet, and this is the best board team that I have ever worked with. They make me feel good, everything is that, so thank you for that.
Thank you.
It's easy to do.
It is. It is. Ali Colgar, Ali, would you please come to the podium? Ali Colgar has been elected as President of the Southfield Laker Optimist Club. The Optimist Club strives to support our community and make a positive difference in the lives of young people. Over the past several years, many Southfield Public School students have been recognized by the Optimist Club for their academic achievements. Congratulations to Ms. Colgar for being recognized for her leadership skills.
Thank you so very much. It is an honor, and I humbly accept, not just from the Southfield Public School District, but from my place of employment for over 26 years, so this is a grand honor. Being the President of the Southfield Optimists is not something that I sought after, but I wanted to do something more in the community. And as Dr. Cook just said, it takes a village, and I wanted to be part of that village. My daughter's now 21-years-old, and I knew that as a community leader, my job was not finished. So I continued to try to bring out the best in children based on the model of the Southfield Laker Optimists, and I asked that you join in, hoping to bring out the best in children. So again, I thank you, thank you, thank you.
Okay, well, that concludes our student staff recognition, and now we turn it over to the superintendent for the report.
Thank you, Mr. President. Let me begin by sharing that our Chief Financial Officer, Debbie Trent, is not with us this evening. She's attending a conference on operations and facilities, and in her absence, we have our Director of Finance, Ms. Shereen Barker, who is sitting in, and we welcome her this evening. You know, we've been hearing a lot about the fantastic things that have been going on in the district, but the thing that you may not know is that many of our alumni are bringing these wonderful ideas, these programs, and often, big, big surprises to us. Tomorrow, at 10:00, we will be at Southfield Laker High School, where one of our alumni in Southfield Laker will be christening our new greenhouse. This alumni provided financial support to restore the greenhouse for all of the children in the district, so that we could do science, and there's stuff, in fact, if you go over there, you can even buy a tomato with kelp. So we are very, very pleased to have that happen, and I welcome all of you to come to Southfield Laker tomorrow and be a part of that grand opening. Also, this evening, we have an alumni that has come back to us, and she is working with Levy High School. I'm going to ask Ms. Shereen T., I'm sorry, Levy Middle School, I just from over there, to go to the podium, and I'm going to invite Dawn Johnson Stevens, who is a Southfield High alumnus, to come up and present the program that she wrote a grant for and brought us back home. Now, I want to say thank you very much.
Good evening, Dr. Cook Robinson, members of the cabinet and board. I am very, very excited, because Dawn was a student of mine just a few years ago. She graduated from Southfield High in 1993. As a student, she was always very determined to do whatever she could to excel, and she doesn't like me talking, I'm going to be talking about the catalytic converter. She was applying for a scholarship to Michigan State, and she had to write this research paper on the catalytic converter. I knew absolutely nothing about it. She knew absolutely nothing about it, but every day, she would come to my classroom after school and would work on that research paper. Dawn graduated with an undergraduate degree from Michigan State University. Her undergraduate degree is in education, and her time there was in business. Because people helped her, because people reached out and said, "You are a young lady who can make a difference in the world. We're going to help you." So she said, "I have to pay it forward." So she began the Solid Foundation Girls Mentoring Program. Now, yes, I do Facebook. Dawn was on Facebook, so we knew each other, so we reached out, where she would always have information about her students, about her program on Facebook. Then I found out one of my parents was her sister, and she started telling me more about it, and I said, "Oh, Dawn," and I inboxed her, "Oh, Dawn, I need you to come to Levy." And she has been working with our young ladies on Tuesdays and Thursdays after school. No charge, just out of love and care and concern. And she's not just working at Levy, she's also working in two other school districts with the same program. So I'd like to present to you Dawn Johnson Stevens.
Good evening, everyone. Ms. T is near and dear to my heart. I don't think that she knew at the time that she was my outlet coming up. I was a product of Southfield High School, as she told you, but I also did all of my education, so I was Kennedy, Thompson, Burry, and Southfield High School. And through those experiences, I had ups and downs, highs and lows, and I experienced a lot of things that I would hope that no young girl would have to experience on her own. So I kept thinking to myself, "How do I prevent this from happening to another young girl?" Instead of talking about it, I've been, "Okay, well, let's see what's going to happen, let's see what we can do about it." So our team, which I want to say thank you to my sister and one of our board members who's here tonight as well, we were able to write a grant through the New Detroit Program, and they helped us to build a business model for a solid foundation that we could then use and replicate, so that each student that went through our program would get a curriculum, get the same curriculum, and we could determine different outcomes. And so we are an empowerment and mentoring organization, as well as an enrichment organization, and our mission is to inspire and empower girls in Southeastern Michigan, because we know programs always staggered off plan. You open up your door, we'll be there. So we want to inspire them to obtain their highest heights, personally, academically, spiritually, and professionally. We've been around since 2002. We started in a basement in Detroit. We mentored 80 girls, and you may think that's a low number, but for me, mentoring isn't about the number of girls. We are a quality mentoring program, so we carry on with our growth goals when we meet them until college graduation. So one of those things, we want to be a bridge between the community and our young people, and how we do that is we have a 12-month mentoring program, which also offers boosters. So our students tend to come back every year, and it's an individualistic program, so we cater to each student, and we're able to build upon the things that they've done in the years before. Our mentoring program includes experiential and service learning projects. This past year, we went to the Martin Luther King Dedication. A lot of our kids participated in the Dr. Martin Luther King Has a Dream and So Do I, which helps them to understand the power of one person can make in the difference of other people's lives. So we were able to do that for the young people. If they didn't happen to die, we worked really hard, so I'm very proud of them. We also offer a workshop series. A lot of times, we find young people have communication problems when it comes to their parents, other people, social issues, that they don't feel comfortable trying to work that out with another student, so we have a component that helps parents and students with one another. We use the five E's and the one I. We engage our students. Our students are the owners of the program. They set the tone, they set the rules, they set the pace, so that we're not just there preaching to them, they're running the program themselves with our guidance. We have service learning products, as I've said before. The best place to get kids involved in the community is helping them understand how they can give back to other young people. We expose them to things they may not be exposed to, to our experiential learning component. We also have, we inspire them by our own stories. A lot of times, you don't give people that want to share with you how they have the ups, the downs, the dips, and how they survive. So we do a lot of those things. We empower them to self-efficacy. A lot of kids are defeated, because they just don't feel like they can do much of anything, so we need to get that self-efficacy component. And each component, and I'm speaking of actually has its own curriculum. We equip them with character development, conflict resolution, and we practice that. You don't want a kid to try to develop characters in the midst of a storm, or have a, try to resolve a conflict in a heated battle. So we prepare them for those kind of things. We also have a career exploration and college prep. And those are just a few things, and I don't want to take up all of the time, but I just wanted to let you know that it's not just a program we put together so I'm going to pop over to the middle school, and yet, you know, our team had worked for three years trying to build this program to make sure that what we're saying we can do, that we're actually going to do it with the children, and that the children will get the most out of this experience. And so if we do this, we say, "Why did we do this?" Once again, I was a young girl. I know what it's like being a young girl, needing an outlet, needing a little bit of structure, so I want to give that back. That is the reason why I do it. These are just some of our grantors who have given to this effort to help us to be able to give back to the children that we give back to, and these are ways that in which if you're willing to help, if you have a desire to help, that you can help. We're always looking for people to volunteer their time, their talents, their treasures, serve in capacities where they can use their skills for better education, to help our program be enhanced for the student. You can always refer a student. We do both school-based programs and community-based programs, so we do a lot of different things. Some things you're not going to see on this is that we actually have a family component as well. But if you want to visit our website, it's solidfoundationonline.org. Feel free to inbox us, somebody will get back with you. But I just want to say thank you to the board, the school board, thank you to Ms. T., thank you to Dr. Wanda Cook Robinson, for allowing us to come and just give. It wasn't about us taking, but just coming for us to give from our experience, and we would like to thank all of you parents for just putting your children in the care of the Southfield Public Schools, because I know what it is for me, so I just say, "You people, you're inspired, and these are the students right here. I'm so happy to see them, and the young lady in the back working. I always love to see kids doing what they love to do." So thank you for the time, and have a great evening. Thank you.
That really illustrates the power of our alumni, and we are working to identify all of our alumni from all over the U.S. In fact, we have Mr. Joyce Salami. Stand up, Joyce, get on the camera. So when this lady emails alumni, please answer. Thank you. Before we go on, I wanted to recognize Mayor Frank Rock, who is with us this evening, our president of Southfield Laker. Stand up and be recognized. Glad you're here with us. On October 27th, from 11:00 to 2:00 p.m., at the Southfield Commons, Southfield High Commons, we will have our first annual Southfield Public Schools Health and Wellness Fair. Now, this is a fair that we put together that will support all of our students, preschool through 12th grade. We will have raffles and prizes, as well as information about health care, health screenings. They tell me that the Hound will be there.
Dr. Healthy Hound.
Dr. Healthy Hound will be there for the children, as well as skincare, health care, everything about health and wellness for our students. We have a number of volunteers from the community that are just sharing their resources to come and to help our students. In addition, to put the fair together, we have our health instructors who have joined the steering team, and our health would just give and suffer. And our health teachers are Ragmek Bohikin, Mark Furstel, Mike Avery, Jennifer McClory, Willie Norwood, Ernie Taver, Tyrone Character, Kelly Hill, Abby Teber, and Beth Lee. And they have met with us and will continue to meet with us and make sure that our agenda, our topics, and the folks that we have coming are on target for our young people, but more importantly, to help with the health and welfare of our students. So I want to say thank you to them this evening. I also want to do a shout-out for Diane Hoffman. She's our journalism teacher at Southfield High School, but let me correct that, our award-winning journalism teacher at Southfield High School, and she has just won a free subscription to the Wall Street Journal for her class for the entire year. So we want to say thank you for our teachers for putting in that extra effort. She is the only teacher from Michigan to win this honor, and she was selected as one of 12 from all over the country. We also want to do a shout-out this evening for McIntyre School. They have received first place in the 2012 City of Southfield Community Pride Award for their outstanding job in maintaining and beautifying the school. They will receive their award on October 15th at a ceremony with the mayor and city council. So we say congratulations to McIntyre. And with that, I will turn you over to my administration.
Good evening. The report to the administrative services can be found within the consent agenda this evening.
Good evening. I have no additional report other than what's contained in the consent agenda and for the report 51.10. Thank you.
Good evening. Well, I guess I will be sharing a few items with you this evening, and thank you for allowing me to have some time. The first thing that I wanted to share with the board and also with the community is to remind everyone that today is the first day of the meet cycle. Our meet testing begins today, or began today, and will be moving forward for the next two weeks. So with that, we wish to remind our parents, and we wish to remind our children, that it's important to wake up in the morning and get a little breakfast, and to get to bed at night, and get plenty of sleep, and also, parents, just try and take a moment to talk with your parent, your students, and your children, rather, so that if they're having any little problem, that we can help resolve that before they get to school and start testing. We want them to have a positive and a confident attitude. So that's one item that I wanted to share. The next item that I wanted to share is that at the last board meeting, I presented to the board and to the community information about an upcoming assessment. I wanted to make sure everyone was aware of that, but I also wanted to move forward and provide more information for our parents, so that they could really start to see, "What is this assessment about?", and also to find out more information about changes with the meet. So this Thursday, yes, this Thursday, October 11th, at University High School, and also the following Thursday, October 25th, we will be having an opportunity for our parents to learn more about this assessment and to learn more about the changes that have occurred with our whole AYP and meet evaluation system. So I look forward to as many of you that, as possible, can attend. We welcome you. And also flyers are being distributed at each of your buildings, and this is for K-12 parents. The next thing is I'd like to ask Mr. George Chaff and Alma Dean to come to the podium, because they're going to provide more insight in terms of Saturday School.
Good evening to members of the Board of Education, Superintendent Cabinet, and also to the community. I want to take a brief moment, and I do mean brief, just to go over our upcoming Saturday School offerings. It is that time of year again. You know, Southfield Public Schools in the last couple of years has built a dynamic and exciting program of everything from academic supports for our children K through 12, to academic enrichment, academic games, chess, arts and crafts, sculpture, so on and so forth. So I just want to take a few moments to go and present that information and how to register your child to attend Saturday School. As I said before, we have two areas that comprise Saturday School. Those that are academic labs and tutorial support, that includes reading labs, mathematics labs, writing, and also we have enrichment programming, such as rural languages, cartooning and animation, academic games, advanced acting, just to name a few. The academic labs cost for eight Saturday sessions $50, and then for enrichment programming, the cost is $75. In terms of what is an academic lab, our reading labs focus on strengthening and enhancing core reading skills, phonics, wordsy, vocabulary. These programs are powered by Read 180, which is a nationally recognized research-based tool with our partners at Laker. Our writing labs focus on grammar skills building, usage, pre-writing, and sentence instruction, ideas and conventions, and this is not just for students that are struggling currently, this is for students that also want to accelerate their skills. Again, with our mathematics, problem-solving, computation, and understanding key concepts and strategies are at the center of these labs. We have very low student-teacher ratios, so there's a lot of time and attention that's dedicated to our... dedicated to our students. In addition, we offer study and test-taking skills courses that help students to focus on good practices like personal organization, time management, as well as good strategies for test-taking. We also offer in our high schools, academic support labs, homework support, and so on and so forth. On the other side, for our K-8 enrichment programming, we'll be offering this fall German, Mandarin Chinese, Spanish for rural languages. In the areas of technology, web design courses, cartooning. And in terms of academic reinforcement, again, for enrichment purposes, academic games, chess, Read 180, and speech courses. And in the arts and humanities, we offer art appreciation, dance, instrumental music, both band and orchestra, acting, jewelry-making, sculpture, and vocal ensemble. Our registration for this fall K-8 Saturday School is going to be this upcoming Monday, October 15th. I'm sorry. Hours of operation will be from 8:00 a.m. until 10:00 a.m. for period one. All courses, both academic and at enrichment, will be at Southfield High School. And we have two periods, one from 8:00 a.m. to 10:00 a.m., and the second from 10:15 a.m. to 12:00 p.m. Again, these are eight Saturdays beginning October 20th, with the last session being December 15th. To learn more about Saturday School offers presented by the District Full for K and High School, you can always go to our website at www.southfield.k12.mi.us/saturday. Brochures have already been distributed, and flyers distributed to school buildings. We already have information online detailing course descriptions and fees. And our Saturday School registration will be located at Michigan First Credit Union. They'll be located at the corner of Evergreen and I-696. They'll be on Monday, October 15th, 2012, from 12:00 p.m. until 6:00 p.m. And to learn any more information, you can contact the Division of Instruction. We have a specialized program hotline. That number is at (248) 746-4326. You can also email us at sbsprograms@southfield.k12.mi.us. From here, I'm going to turn it over to my colleague, Alma Dean, our supervisor for academic achievement. She's going to talk about our district-based advancement AP prep program.
Good evening, everyone.
Good evening.
I just want to take a few moments and explain to you our pilot program for the AP prep program at the district level. Our AP prep program, I should tell you, has three components. One at the classroom level, one at the building, and Saturday is our district-level AP prep experience. Saturday School, we have a nominal fees and materials cost. The experiences are anchored in the contents of English, mathematics, science, and technology. This will also be eight Saturdays, a eight-week, four-course rotation from 8:00 a.m. to 12:00 p.m., with a 30-minute lunch break in between. We will also provide at least one field experience for each of the students. This is a sample of the rotation. Each grade cluster will experience all four rotations. So from K-2, week one, they may be in science investigations, while third and fourth graders are in robotics, fifth and sixth graders may be in storytelling, and seventh and eighth grade may be in web design. Then weeks three and four, as you can see, K-2 will experience robotics, third and fourth storytelling, fifth and sixth web design, seventh and eighth science investigations, and on and on. So each grade cluster will have an opportunity to experience all four course rotations. This is an example of the type of experience the children will have in the robotics class, for example. This particular activity allows the children, they're gathering teams of three or four, and with a bag of various materials, each team must use the materials to design a robotic, a working robotic arm. And it has some particulars that are required for it, but eventually, it should be able to pick up a styrofoam cup. And they're going to test it, analyze it, and see if it meets a given criteria. So it should, and it will vary according to the age level of the students. This is a possible field experience, which would include a trip to the Robot Garage, which is located in Birmingham, just recently opened about a year ago. And the students would have an opportunity to come there and work closely with leaders from the robotics and education community, and have a hands-on experience to, again, work on some of these technical things that children their age otherwise may not be exposed to until they're much older. Any questions concerning the AP prep program? Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. And that concludes my report.
Okay. And now we'll have a report from the Head Start from Ms. Smith.
Thank you. BUSTY Center for Early Childhood Education, Janice Hill, Principal, Head Start Policy Council note from the meeting held on Monday, October 8, 2012, at 9:30 a.m. Okay. BUSTY is fully enrolled with 190 students. In order to operate Head Start prior to school enrollment, there are still 128 students on our waiting list. BUSTY is fully staffed, which is important as well. There were 936 breakfasts served in the month of September, 1,180 lunches, and also 886 snacks. During the month of September, it was discovered that 10 students had not had vision screenings, 27 students had not had hearing screenings, and 14 had not had dental screenings. Head Start provides an invaluable service to parents and the community by insisting on screenings for young children. How can we expect young learners to sit still with a toothache or to learn how to identify objects when they have vision problems and have gone unidentified? I think the Village concept is a theme of the night. Oakland County Health Department screened 20 to 25 four-year-olds. The Kids Project screened 22 three-year-olds for vision. And on October 22nd, Bright Smiles Dental will be doing dental screenings. Thank you to all of those community partners. Regarding average daily attendance, Head Start requires 85% ADA. The week of September 17th, there were 82% ADA. The week of September 24th, 76%. And the week of October 1st, 83%. The family service workers will investigate and follow up with Ms. Hill. And we, as a district, would like to maintain 85% or above for BUSTY Head Start. Ms. Hill talked about possibly offering incentives to parents. With regard to improvement plans and actions, letter requesting extension to address the deficiencies was submitted to the region on September 28th. Fire marshal, the fire marshal came to complete fire inspection. Currently, Mr. Gregory, Ms. Bussie Smith, and Ms. Hill are working on these issues. Regarding parents at BUSTY, parent representative elections were held on Thursday, September 27th. Each classroom has two representatives. On October 18th of 2012, policy elections will be held. Parent orientation was held on Monday, September 10th and 12th, where 146 and 190 families attended, respectively. Pedestrian and safety training has already occurred. And that's important to mention because it has to be done within a certain period of time of the beginning of school year. Also, Health and Service, the Health and Service Advisory Council, HSTAT, met on September 27th. That was their first meeting. That also puts us in compliance regarding the 45 days of starting school. The plans are underway for a holistic fair on November 29th, from 4:30 to 6:30 for parents, offering different types of stress relievers, massages, snacks, yoga, yoga, and other things will be available. More info to come. Head Start Awareness Month is the month of October, and Head Start Awareness Day was today at BUSTY. And I believe Ms. Cass is going to share a little bit more with us about Head Start and why it's important for us to remember it this month. Okay, I'll keep up. Paper dollars, if you look behind you, are visible. These are paper dollars done by our darling BUSTY students. You can also find them at Kroger on 12 and Evergreen, Uncle Joe's Chicken, Kadova, Helenic Coney, and, as I mentioned, the JWE boardroom. To celebrate today, the Southfield Fire Department was on BUSTY's campus with the fire truck. Southfield Police with coloring books and badges, Omnicare and Doc Fair were in the house, PNC Bank, Spider-Man, which brought the house down, from what I hear, and guest readers, and many more activities for the kids today. Finally, upcoming events will be the student trip to the Blake's Apple Orchard on Thursday, October 11th, curriculum night, October 17th, 5 to 7 p.m. Policy Council elections, as I mentioned, October 18th, Bring Mom to School, October 24th, and celebrity readers will start in November. With regard to the money, as you can see, the grant was $1.3 million. Our expenditure to date is $138,330.87, or 10.61% of our budget. Balance remaining is $1.1 million. And there was additional grant, as I mentioned last month, an award of $9,000 due to a federal bill for Head Start's cost of living increase. Last year's grant is $1.2 million. I believe that's all I have.
Thank you very much. I covered just about everything. I did see the dolls at Kroger's. If you haven't been there yet, I suggest you go. It is really uplifting to see what our educators have done to the dolls. They are funny. They are, I don't know, sentimental, whatever you want to, however you want to look at them, they're just great. And I'd like to remind you that our Head Start program is fully accredited by the National Association for the Education of Young Children, and they're seeking further accreditation. Also, we have so many applicants for our Head Start program that they have submitted a request to Head Start for a larger grant, to provide an extra classroom for all of those children on the waiting list. And we're hoping that they get the message. Ms. Hill is just doing a really good job. So thank you very much.
Moving forward, we get to unfinished business, which we have none. And this time, I'll take a motion to open and approve the consent agenda.
So moved. Support.
Moving and supported. Are there any questions from the board? Hearing none, the secretary, would you please call for the vote?
Yes. Bussie Williams?
Yes.
Excuse me. Myself? Yes. Bussie Robinson?
Yes.
Bussie Poole?
Yes.
Bussie Lewis?
Yes.
My friend and Cass?
Yes.
Yes. Okay. And just like that, we just paid our bills to the tune of about $8,100,000. So that's how quick that kind of money can come around here. This time, I'll take a motion to open the...
Now, before we go on to the next report, I'd just like to give David Turner an opportunity to make some comments about the personnel report. There was a little highlight there this year.
Good evening, again.
Okay.
I'd like to point your attention to items 8 through 11. You will see personnel access for the initiation of hiring. AKIVA Teachers' School participates in our shared time partnership that we have consummated with AKIVA School. Again, this is through many years of negotiations, at least three, to get this program off the ground. This administration, this board, in partnership with the leadership of AKIVA, have established this shared time program. And we are servicing 224 students through their shared time service program. And we will see, obviously, student population and return of revenue, as well as teaching services given to those students who are served through AKIVA. So I did want to highlight that their program is well underway and moving along through a lot of hard work on both sides of this table. More information to come as we have other successful proposals.
Thank you. And that's important to note because, you know, as this district is serving the entire community of Southfield and Lakeville Village, we serve all of our community partners, including the Jewish schools, as well as any of the schools that need the services of the Southfield Public Schools. So we're reaching out to all of the community stakeholders, and this is just part of that initiative. So thank you for your interest in this term. Okay. This time, I'll take a motion to open and approve Report 5110, the supplemental staff agreement.
Moving. Support.
Okay. Moving and supported. Is there background information?
Yes, I'm going to ask Ms. Pam Bar, if she will go to the podium. And this particular item refers to a student that I think the board had received emails about, and it's a student that needed a nurse in order to participate fully in her educational program.
Good evening, board.
Good evening.
Good evening, the president and cabinet. We had the fortunate opportunity to return a student, one of our students, to Southfield. And as a result, we needed to put accommodations in place for her. So therefore, based on her IEP, we needed nursing services to address her health care management. And because of that, we saved on revenue in bringing her back. However, in this process, we interviewed several agencies. And this particular agency required, had the staffing available. They were more flexible in adjusting their contract, and they also had a way to provide home orientation for the family as well. So with all those components, we felt that this particular agency had all the components that the IEP had also addressed the student's need. Also, on top of that, the bid was considerably reasonable compared to the other agencies that were interested.
She's going to agree every day, she has every day.
Yes, every day.
Every day.
Because of the low accident rate, I cannot really go into the particulars.
No.
But she was the health care manager here.
She was why the care team.
She was the health care management every day.
Because of student privacy, we cannot go into specifics in this meeting.
Of course.
Because of student privacy. Hi, just there. Thank you.
Are there any further questions? Thank you, Ms. Bar.
Thank you.
If there are no further questions, the secretary, would you please call for the vote?
Yes. Bussie Robinson?
Yes.
Bussie Poole?
Yes.
Bussie Williams?
Yes.
Myself?
Yes.
Bussie Lewis?
Yes.
My friend and Cass?
Yes.
My friend and Karen?
Yes. Okay, thank you. This time, I'll take a motion to open and approve Report 5111, the Northwest Educational Assessment. So moved and supported.
Yes. Flash Doctor Woods, to give us some background.
Absolutely. The Northwest Educational Association, the Measurement of Academic Progress Assessment, is an assessment that we introduced to you at the last board meeting, along with our community. It's an assessment that is also, it measures the academic growth in the areas of English language and mathematics, or reading language and mathematics. We would like to have this continually administered in grades one through 11 in our district. And also, it is an assessment that has been entered into a cooperative or cooperative agreement with Oakland Schools. In the county, this assessment is being used throughout as a form of measurement for academics, as well as to use as a continual form of measurement for growth. And that is one of the key elements that will be a part of many of our evaluations as we look into the future that the state is even looking at. This is a primary assessment for that. So that is the suggestion that the state and the county is suggesting for us here and throughout the county. And we are recommending that the board approve the payment for this assessment. And this is a general funding expenditure.
Any questions? Question, dollar, here?
This assessment is done after four times a year. It is to help determine the growth of academic progress of our children. And this is unlike the MEET, where the MEET is only administered once in October. And it's only administered, it is not tracking... it is not tracking every child. In our district with the administration of this assessment, every child in grades 1 through 11 will be assessed to determine whether they are growing academically in the areas of reading language and mathematics throughout the course of this year.
There's an $83,000 one-time payment.
Yes, for the year.
For the year.
Per year, yes.
That'll be every year we do that to them.
That would be every year. And the cost has been reduced because of the cooperative agreement that open schools have entered in for every school district in our county.
And this is something that we don't have much choice about. The state is requiring that we track the academic progress of every student and be able to demonstrate that growth, so therefore, the test must be administered, you know, several and several assessment points throughout the year, and we don't have much choice. What's helped us here is that the entire county is using this, in fact, tri-county area is using it, where our superintendents meeting, we had opportunities to review this, at West, at Linda's Teaching and Learning Council, where all the associates in curriculum have reviewed, we did a lot of homework on selecting this assessment. It is, it appears that it is the best thing that is out there at this time for us to use. The cost, I have to tell you, when Linda came in here and told me the cost, I had a few questions after that, but it is a necessity, and we are in a high stakes task environment in Michigan, and therefore, we have no option but to participate.
Is it done during the school day, or on a Saturday, or afternoon?
Oh, no, it's done during the school day, and children have, it's a flexible time, meaning they have enough time to complete it. It's not that they, it's time, they only have 30 minutes to complete it, so there's some fluidity there, but it is something that is very good for our parents, our kids, and I really want parents to have an opportunity to learn about the assessment, because what it does is children are provided a question at, let's say, the second grade level, and if they are accelerating and they're doing very well, they'll be challenged with a little higher question. We're trying to find where the children are academically, so that we can best provide the kind of strategic intervention academically to move them forward and to demonstrate that learning.
Is it multiple choice, a mixture of?
It's a, it's multiple choice.
I'd just like to find out that when you give the meet, you give it to the 10th grade every year, correct?
We give it to the, the meet is given to grades 3 through 8.
3 through 8?
Yes, and it's also given at the 9th grade, and it's also given, and the Michigan Merit Exam is what is given to the 11th graders.
So it's given to the same children every year?
It's given to the same children.
Provided that they're the same children.
Exactly.
Because children come home.
Yes, but it's not tracked the same way.
That's right, so this tracks a child.
Absolutely, absolutely.
It's a little more informational.
Absolutely.
Thank you. Any further questions? None. The secretary, would you please call for the vote?
Trustee Lewis?
Yes.
Trustee Mann?
Yes.
Trustee Robinson?
Yes.
Trustee Poole?
Yes.
Myself, yes. My friend and cat?
Yes.
Friend and Buchanan?
Yes. Okay. We now come to gifts to the board, report 5112. Mr. and Mrs. Craig and Kathleen Heickel donated new books to Southfield Lakeville High School Library Media Center. Ms. Heickel is the school librarian at Southfield Lakeville. The donation has an estimated value of $400, and it only exists. The items are listed on the attached document to the board intended that you have there, so you have to go check that out. We have information items, purchasing report. There are items that are purchased that don't meet the threshold, so that needs board approval, and it just so happens that one of the items that was replaced was the water heater at Thompson. Thank God we got that done before it got cold. All right, we now come to public participation. Comments are generally limited to three minutes. The board will listen to all comments and may not respond during the meeting. Compliments may be referred to the administrator or the superintendent for follow-up. As a matter of fairness, speakers with complaints against individuals are asked not to mention persons by name. Complaints concerning employees should be brought to the attention of school principals or other administrators before coming to the board. Your cooperation is appreciated, and we call please step to the microphone, to the podium, and give your name and address for the record. First, we have Geraldine Amato.
Good evening. My name is Geraldine Amato. I've been here in Southfield since June.
Your address, please, ma'am.
I'm at 23234 Antique Lane. In a little condominium complex, which has the potential of community, but just like the most neighborhoods in our society today, we hardly know each other. We're separated from each other by our junk and our stuff, and we're taught to engage ourselves, pursue careers, but not to pursue community in a real sense. I wanted to share with you what I have learned since I've been out of school, just to touch on a couple of dynamics of it and hope that you will investigate it further. To my dismay, I have learned that I was lied to in history classes all through public school, and on the university level, I even read for a blind law student in the early 1980s, and they do not study law in law school, they study what I call the legal arts, and I reference that as the black arts. No attorney today is allowed to uphold the law of the free republic. If such an attorney would dare do so, the bar association operatives in the hierarchy would come down on them with both feet. That's where the disciplinary action comes. But they're required to administer this private commercial jurisdiction that we're now operational under. I challenge people to review what an actual lawful and true history is. For example, we were told that the Civil War freed the slaves. I was never told in school that Missouri was a slave state, but it was a union state, so the Emancipation Proclamation did not divest Missouri slaveholders of their property. The revolutionary era in the 1700s is quite obscured from full coverage in the history documentation in the curriculum because of who controlled our schools. And the reason why we don't study the genuine dynamics of the control of the money system is because those who control it do not want us to understand how the people who control the monetary system and the banking system tend to take an entire control of the nation. We are being set up. When we talk about fiscal restraints and that we have to balance budgets and cut spending, what really is happening, we're just cutting more Americans out and cutting more Americans off, and effectively...
Thank you, Ms. Mano. Thank you, Ms. Mano. You too, ma'am.
You're just interrupting me in the middle of a sentence and not letting me finish the sentence, that's very rude. I've been sitting here for an whole hour listening to...
This is our meeting, this isn't your meeting, ma'am, so...
Oh, I thought you said the public, sir.
Okay, and that's including everybody else here, not just you, so you...
Well, you're a rude, you're a rude person, and you're setting a poor example for the next generation of people.
Thank you very much.
I'm trying to inform you, and you don't want to be informed.
Next, we have Derek and Lavanda Adams.
Good evening.
Good evening.
Again, Derek Adams and Lavanda Adams, here on behalf of my son, Mikael Washington.
Could I state your name for the...
Derek Gilson Adams, 230305 Lane, Southfield, Michigan, 4033.
Thank you, sir.
Again, here on behalf of Mikael Washington, my son. He's now, luckily, for all of us, a young black man who made it out of the inner city, and he's now attending Alabama State University, so we're proud of that. He's HBCU attendee. He's a graduate of Southfield High School, an extraordinary track and field athlete. He's a five-time Junior Olympic qualifier, fourth-place medalist in the 4x8, which exemplifies his potential. Such a talent has been undercut because he was placed in the civics class at Southfield High School, an inefficient educator who didn't keep good records. On our knowing such, we met with principal, assistant principal, teacher, resulting in a reapable change of his grade from FD to a B minus because of the unsubstantiated grades on behalf of the educator. The teacher, Ms. H. Alcoler, provided change information to the counselor, Ms. Y., but failed to change his grade on Plato system, which we know generates the official transcript. We followed up with the principal, assistant principal, who attempted to contact her via email, and such, she refused to respond. We were forced to wait until the fall of the senior year, she never did. Why is this important? We paid for him to go to Alabama State University because he was offered a scholarship for track and field partial, so this is very important to us. However, the NCAA Clearinghouse, which is now the governing board of all students, you can be as good as you want to be in whatever sport you want, but you have to have specific courses and specific alignment, and it is supposed to be the job of the counselor to facilitate such. First, we were found that the NCAA Clearinghouse rejected his application due to this one specific course. First, it was online. Why he was taking an online course during a regular school day, we have no idea. To me, that's absolutely ignorant. Secondly, when this information was provided to us through NCAA Clearinghouse, they requested for us to provide certain information. We contacted Mrs. Y., my, excuse me, my fault, Mrs. Y., and we specifically itemized all the things that were to be provided, as well as the deadline. She decided she was going to send them a note of whatever she wanted to. She attempted to address none of the itemized criteria that was required by NCAA Clearinghouse. Thus, the date passed. What we found out was, because of her inefficient movement, my son is now no longer eligible to participate, nor is he eligible to receive that scholarship. So we followed up once again with her, and the NCAA required certain information regarding the online course. Well, as a professional, his educator, I use that word loosely, said specifically that, said specifically she couldn't provide the information, and Ms. Y., neither facilitated that as well. So what we are finding ourselves in is a situation that we have two people who didn't do their job and are costing us thousands, we're asking for investigation, and we're asking that the counselors in Southfield Public Schools be forced to undergo professional development so that they can have these students in alignment with the NCAA Clearinghouse, and at least we're asking for possible reimbursement for the tuition that he has lost due to the inefficiency of these so-called educators.
Let me be fine. First of all, first of all, the state of Michigan requires that all students take an online course prior to graduation, so, you know, if parents have issues with that, you know, let the state know as well, because those requirements come from the state. You know, we're aware of this problem, and we sympathize with you, with my understanding, Mr. Chaff and Dr. Wood are working on this issue. In fact, they have talked with NC, NCAA today, and NCAA, thank you, and will be talking tomorrow, and we will be working with you to problem solve and resolve this issue. Now, it's my understanding that both Ms. Williams and Ms. Chaff talked to you today. That didn't happen?
That didn't prevent us from coming here to this meeting.
I understand that, but I, but...
Yes, ma'am.
In your conversation, it sounds like the school district is doing nothing.
Well, when they call us today, it's not...
Well, no, we've been calling, and then we've been working on this, okay?
That's not, that's not incurred.
I know Mr. Chaff and Dr. Wood will continue to work on this issue.
Appreciate it.
And help to get it resolved. But the other issue about your feelings about online courses, that's not, that's not a...
It should be for an elect, it's not a required course.
Well, the issue wasn't that, the issue was she had no records.
I'm not going to argue from the audience.
She had no records, and as an educator, okay, sir, you have to have records.
He can talk about the actions.
Can we, I'm sure, can we please, you know, keep some of the corner? Thank you.
And so I'll pause the information.
Okay, we now come to board matters, where the board can share information with the community. I think a lot of us have on, on our mind the proposals that are going to be on the ballot next month. Do any of you want to speak on that in particular? Does anybody want to speak on that? Okay.
Excuse me, I'm going to leave the proposal talk to you and your families, but my urge is to certainly pay attention to circuit court judge elections, pay attention to judge elections in general, whether it's this year or in the future, because regardless of yeses or nos on proposals, those are the folks who interpret the law. So if you are in favor or not in favor of certain proposal that passes, just pay attention to who's going to interpret that law and vote accordingly.
I might add that you, this ballot is very long, and you have to turn it over and pay attention to what's on the other side. That's where many of the judges are, and also the community colleges. The boards of the community colleges are very, very important. They're more important today than they ever were because of the cost of college. Many of our students are going to community colleges for credit for their first two years, and then proceeding to the more expensive universities. So it's really critical that we maintain high standards in these schools, and so please, please turn your ballot over and make an effort to find out whom you're going to vote for. There are people in the community who are knowledgeable about community colleges if you want to talk to them. And I could also mention that there are two vacant seats on the school board, and we are not allowed to speak on pro or con on any issues that's on the ballot, only to explain the issues, so that's about all I can say. But there are two seats on the school board, and I would urge you to vote for members of the school board.
I don't want to say that the seats are empty, but...
No, they're not empty.
They're filled.
They will be.
Their terms have expired, certainly. Ms. Lewis?
Yes, I just would like to encourage the voters in Southfield Lakeville, Southfield Lakeville Village, and Southfield County to be educated upon the issues that's going to be on the board, that's going to be on the ballot, because there's more things at stake than just who we're going to select as president of the United States. Yes, that's important too, but we have to remember that local politics is also important. So it's important on who you choose to be your local leader in your community, because it would be a grave impact. So I just encourage the voters to educate themselves of what's going to be on the ballot.
Okay, the other...
All right.
I'd like to take a moment to recognize Mr. Deegan's freshman class, civics class, from the University High School. I know David's still here, and I know David's got a lot of homework that he probably needs to get into tonight, but this is a classic, classic case, this particular board meeting, because we're, this will be our last board meeting, public board meeting before the election on Tuesday, November 6th, and what's important with our student reps and our students throughout the Southfield Public School District is the fact that you were born with the right vote, and a lot of members of this board and members of this community were not born with that opportunity. They had to protest, they had to picket, they had to boycott, they had to march, they even lost their lives to give you the right vote. So don't take it lightly. We expect a heavy turnout Tuesday, November 6th, a heavy turnout. Polls open at 7:00, they'll close at 8:00 p.m. If you're in line to vote by 8:00, you will be allowed to vote. Now, you can vote absentee, but what I want you to remember is the fact that I took a recent trip a couple summers ago to Africa, and when the South Africans got their rights to vote, they had to walk a day to the voting station. They had to stay and stand at least a half day at best to vote. Then they had to walk another day to get back home. We're out of here, right in the neighborhood. You can walk there, you can drive there, you didn't have to stand a couple hours for the lines. Exercise your... Exercise your right vote. That's important. The other thing I'd like to leave with you, especially Mr. Deegan's class, is the fact that, uh, there's probably six proposals in this upcoming election. In addition to a number of judicial seats, uh, a number of slated seats, and of course, the executives. And that's pretty much your, your branches of government. Everyone will be represented on that ballot. Now, you're too young right now to vote, but if you were eligible to vote, today would be your last day registered for this particular election. So, um, don't take it lightly. You know, when you're born into something, you have a tendency to lose the sense of the importance of that privilege to vote. But also understand it is your right to vote as well. I'd like to also take this opportunity to congratulate the Southfield Lakeville Socrates. Uh, they seem to be doing very well about now, and that's a global support. So, I'd like to send a hearty congratulations to them as well.
Because of the lateness of the hours, I won't, uh, I'll say my board matters for November, but, um, I, I have to speak on this and, uh, I believe what's right is right. I believe what's wrong is wrong. And I believe that it's extremely wrong that there's been a malicious and vicious attack on my lawn signs for my reelection campaign.
No, no, no.
Please have been noticed. I wouldn't say. No, that's always right.
I'm gonna say nothing for campaigning.
Not, and it's.
Inappropriate.
I have something to say.
Yes.
Uh, as Ms. Smith said earlier, this is Head Start Awareness Month. And by way of a little background, Head Start was founded in nineteen sixty-five by Professor President Lyndon Johnson as a, an eight-week summer school program for, uh, low-income children, preschoolers. And it has gradually grown to the wonderful education program that we have today. And I think, uh, we have simplified what's good about Head Start. I have said before that if all of public education was run by the federal government the way Head Start is, everything would be superb, just like Southfield. And I would like to congratulate the principal, Ms. Janet Till of Head Start, who was sitting back there. I would like to applaud you. Thank you, thank you.
Okay. Uh, future meetings, October twenty-third is, uh, at six o'clock, student hearings. October twenty-seventh, from eleven to two, is our Health and Wellness Fair at Southfield High School. And November thirteenth at seven, uh, seven o'clock is our next regular school board meeting. Uh, this time I'll take a motion to adjourn. Okay, and with that, this meeting of the Southfield Board of Education.